Make these kinds of cuts, how do we not give kids exactly what they need? We get more and more top-heavy here and then ultimately, who hurts? Kids hurt. So I just ask that you look closely at what money is being spent, how it is being spent, and I know that you guys spend hours of your time on that budget subcommittee in deciding where the money is going to be spent. But we all do not feel that it is being spent appropriately. I mean, we laid off people and administrators are taking a three percent raise. What are we doing?
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else? Does anyone else want to speak? Okay. Okay. No one else is approaching the podium to speak? Okay, moving on to the agenda items. Thank you Lisa. All right, school committee, old business, school committee policies, sections E, F, G, and H, second reading and a vote. All right, Dr. Bailey, do you want to introduce that one? Or is it just?
Well, this is our second reading and if everyone is in agreement, we would have to take a vote in form.
Okay.
And then obviously at the very end of all the policy updates.
Will it?
We'll approve it.
The entire manual?
The entire manual.
Thank you. All right, so can I have a motion to approve sections E, F, G, and H of our school committee policies? Motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all set. All right, new business, superintendent's report, Dr. Bailey, personnel matters.
So you have a sheet in your packet with just an update. We had one resignation and two new staff members were added. Very pleased to report that when we have added new staff, we're getting hundreds of applicants to our district, so it's a good sign. When teachers are leaving, not the critical area ones, but the other ones, we're getting at least a hundred applicants. I know for my assistant, we had over two hundred applicants and she will be starting at the end of October. So, that's all I have for that.
Does anyone have any questions?
No.
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 All right, so on first reading, we have school committee policies, sections I and J.
And I don't know if anybody has any questions, but we sent that ahead of time in your packet. This is just the first reading and the next committee meeting will be our second reading. So if anybody has any questions that you want the subcommittee to review, we're more than happy to look at anything.
Okay, great, all right. Does anyone have any questions?
No, not at this point.
No, okay, thank you. All right, so we have the spring 2019 MCAS results by Dr. Fran Roy.
Yeah, so I'd like to introduce Dr. Roy. As you know, she's a former assistant superintendent from Fall River and not only does she consult in Akushnet, but she consults in several districts. She is, she's been the receiver at the Parker School in New Bedford for one year and she also works with the state, with DESI. So her expertise is really school turnaround and school improvement and I read the paper today, so congratulations on everything that you're doing at Parker School. She has also been helping us since last year on our curriculum work. I know that she begun the discussions this summer around algebra at the middle school. She has a very strong background in math and she's been charged with looking at our data and basically presenting us tonight and it was just released today, so it's perfect timing for us to have this presentation. Everybody has that in their packet tonight.
Thank you.
So my goal really is to make the amount of data that is made available to you understandable, right? Because it gets very complicated, so I'm going to try to, you know, sort of walk you through what the data actually means. So there's two ways of looking at the data. One is accountability, which is really from the state. The state is looking at you through accountability, but I think as, you know, as a parent, you're really looking at performance. Is my kid meeting expectations or exceeding expectations? So I'm going to look at both of those for you, so you have both those perspectives, the state perspective and perhaps more from the actual student perspective. Who's meeting their expectations, who isn't? So, the accountability, if you look on DESI's website now, it is this really complicated chart right here. And there's a lot of good news when I look at this chart. This is district accountability, so this is the two schools put together. Where you see a four, that means the district exceeded their target. The state assigns targets in a really complex statistical way to schools for each of those measures. So when we're looking at the all students column, you see English language arts achievement, four out of four. That means their improvement, that Akushnet exceeded their improvement target for performance in ELA. In math, you're at a three, so there's really no change in general. A three would have been that you met your target. Four is you're exceeded and that two, I believe, is the no change. And then the science is a one, which means you've improved, but below the target, below what DESI is saying you should be improving by. For EL, for the growth, you see this thing in green called growth, that's really a measure of how kids are progressing from grades four to eight compared to like peers statewide. And what you see with these, both in ELA and math growth, three out of four, that it's typical growth. So the kids in Akushnet in general, when you look at this district lens, are growing just like every other kid is around the state. Just, it's typical, it's like average. And then when we move down, the state has really tried to embed some non-academic measures or, and you see chronic absenteeism and we're going to take a look at, you got zero points. So in general, your chronic absenteeism did not improve, it got worse and that's where the zero is coming from. So the way the state does it, it takes those numbers for all kids and you've had, if you add those up and create a percentage, you get fifty-nine percent of those targets. The goal is seventy-five, but you got fifty-nine percent of them. Now, on the right-hand side, you see the same thing, but for the bottom, the lowest twenty-five percent of kids, the state identifies from previous MCAS years, the lowest twenty-five percent. They're trying to make the playing field a little bit more equal from the urbans and the suburbans, because every school, whether you're urban, suburban, has a bottom twenty-five percent and they're saying every kid matters, DESI's saying every kid matters. So not only do we want you moving all kids, but we also want you looking out for those kids who are probably academically in some way fragile. So what you see there is actually a pretty strong showing where ninety percent of the targets were met, the improvement targets were met for the lowest performing group. Okay? So before I go on to the next, that's a really complicated slide and I'm going to show you some detail on those numbers. Wherever you didn't get a three or a four, I'm going to show you a little bit more detail. But do you have any questions before I move on?
I do. So for special education, would that be considered in the bottom part of it?
It could be. You could be a student with disabilities, that is part of the bottom twenty-five, but you also could just be a regular kid. It's based on previous year's MCAS.
And we've improved ninety percent.
For those lowest, well, you've met ninety percent of the improvement targets, is kind of the language you would use.
Isn't that good?
That's good. The goal is seventy-five. So anything above seventy-five is good.
So if I could just interject, the staff worked really hard on identifying the bottom twenty-five percent, because we knew this was going to be an area that was going to be looked at heavily. So they did a really nice job of identifying those kids and working with them on their goals.
Yeah, it's positive. So fifty percent comes from the all students, fifty percent comes from the lowest performing, the twenty-five percent, okay?
Thank you.
All right, so if we want to look at some detail, so obviously there's a lot of positive things, there's a lot of targets that have been met or even exceeded, this is all good work. So obviously whenever you look at data, it's really just an inquiry, so what's the data telling me? So if we take a look at where you didn't get to the three out of the four in the district math performance, so this next table breaks it out by all your subgroups. And what you see there is, you see a 2018 achievement in terms of your scaled score, a 2019 achievement, what the change was and what your target is and whether you met it or not. So again, so for all students, you see a positive change of zero point seven, so you improved, but below the target, right? That's really not much of a change. But again, that lowest performing group had a nice jump and exceeded their targets of three point six. And then you go through some minor reductions for economically disadvantaged and your students with disabilities, right? It's not a big change, but it's a little bit of a decline. So that's what's happening on that one. The other interesting one is the chronic absenteeism. When you look at that one, again, broken out by all the subgroups, that one is more consistent. So every subgroup has declined. So that's, you know, that's an interesting indicator about why that's happening. I think there's some truth to that nationally and there's a lot of schools now that have attendance campaigns, they have attendance teams, they do a lot of work with parents who are either struggling to get their kids here, as well as incentivizing coming to school and why that's so important. So now, let's take that same accountability, but let me break it out by school for you. So that was the district accountability. This next slide is Akushnet Elementary School Accountability. And when you take, you know, a look at that, in the same light, you see meeting four out of four, getting a four out of four in their English language arts achievement. So they exceeded their targets in ELA performance. But mathematics achievement, looks like there's a slight decline with the zero out of four. Okay, and I'll break that out again for you. The growth is very strong for all students, exceeding what you would expect for growth. And then again, you see the chronic absenteeism, as is an issue district-wide, is also an issue there. On the real positive side of that, for the elementary school, they had, met a hundred percent of their targets for the lowest performing group. I believe that's like twenty-five kids, because now that's only grade four, right? So it's kind of the bottom twenty-five percent, the lowest scoring, twenty-five percent from grade three, now they're, you know, in fourth grade and then that's how that data gets compiled, but that's very strong growth for those bottom kids. So when you look again, if we break that out, when you look at the math performance, now remember, that lowest performing group is only twenty-five, so their data is going to fluctuate statistically pretty quickly, right? Just a few students makes a huge difference. So when I look at that data, in math performance, you do see a decline in every group but the lowest performing group, which had a nice positive gain of sixteen point four scaled points and they exceeded their target there. Okay, so Ford Middle School, likewise, you're seeing the English language arts growth, achievement targets being met, math achievement, three out of four, you met your target, you didn't exceed it, but you certainly met it. And then science, because science is only happening in grades five and eight, only five and eight, so that's at the middle school. You improved, but you improved below your target. I think, no, you so, oh no, you stayed the same on that, that one is you stayed the same about. So not much of a change. The growth, you see a growth of ELA of two out of four, but the math growth was typical with three out of four. And again, that chronic absenteeism is an issue at the middle school as well. And then again, the lowest performing students, not quite as strong as the elementary school, but again, higher than all students. So seventy-one percent of the targets were met for the lowest performing group at the middle school, which is a lot more kids, because you're going to have those kids now in grades five through eight than the all students in the sixty-three. So when we take a look at the chronic absenteeism for Ford Middle, more consistent about, you know, again, everybody declined, every kind of subgroup, so it's not one group bringing it down or another. It's kind of, all the subgroups seem to be on a decline in terms of their absenteeism. And then the science, if you just want to take a, you know, look at the science, you see with all students, there really was sort of no change there, that's the one. The high needs group, kind of what they're giving you is sort of this no change, economically disadvantaged, point two, improved but low target, but it's relatively flat. Students with disabilities, unfortunately, you see a decline of seven point five. This is a brand-new test, the science test was the first year that it's been changed, so this is sort of the first year that people are getting used to this new science exam for MCAS. Any questions on that? Here's Ford, here's the math piece, again, if you want to look. For math, you're seeing a lot of met targets for many subgroups, the lowest performing improved, but slightly below where they needed to be. And students with disabilities, you're not really seeing much of a change, slight decline. Yes?
Now that we've added algebra to eighth grade, will we see like down the road an improvement in this, do you think, in your opinion?
Yeah, well, we're hoping, we haven't added it yet, so this, it was over the summer that I met with your eighth grade math teacher and we were looking at curricular resources and the beauty of eighth grade math, there's, as we had the discussion, is there's a huge overlap with eighth grade standards and what we all called Algebra One, remember when we all took Algebra One in high school? Now, that looks a lot like eighth grade math, not completely, but there's just this huge overlap and that's what we want to take advantage, because if it can be more aligned to MCAS and prepare those kids for advanced coursework at Fairhaven High School, wherever they go to high school, it's like a two-for-one deal, right? So that was the deal, to make it more aligned with what grade A MCAS is now assessing, as well as making sure that your students, once they leave you, have those opportunities for advanced math coursework. So we've just begun that work, but, so hopefully by the end of this year, we should see something.
Okay.
All right, so what all that means, so this is what the stat, all accountability, that's what the state is looking at. So that's how the state identifies, who do I need to intervene or monitor? So in general, what it means is the district has made substantial progress towards its targets. The DESI obviously is not worried about Akushnet and they're not going to come and really try to figure out, you know, is there something that they need to intervene? The elementary school was at the meeting or exceeding their targets and Ford Middle School, not quite at that seventy-five, but again, substantial progress in general to where they need to be. All right, so that's one lens. The other lens, as I mentioned, which I think is maybe more understandable to you as, maybe as a school committee member or to a parent, is, well, how many of our kids are actually meeting grade level expectations, right? Because the goal of MCAS, when you take an MCAS exam, it's really sort of a dipstick of readiness for the next grade level. How prepared is my child, let's say my child's in fourth grade, ready for the rigor of fifth grade, because every year, it gets harder. And so if you're behind in fourth grade, it's just, it's just going to compound, right? So it's a measure of readiness for what's about to come for that child. So if we look, yeah, I have a three-year trend for you. We'll start with district performance for ELA. And what you can see there is a positive change of four points in the percentage of kids that were meeting the expectations in ELA from forty-six to fifty. What you see is the exceeding has remained the same, right? No change in exceeding. And on another positive note, the way I usually look at these, I look at exceeding, I look at meeting, and then I look at not meeting. So we're not meeting, 2018, you had ten percent, but 2019, you had six percent, right? So it was a decline of four, which is probably why that lowest performing group actually scored well, so you see how it's sort of connected. So those are all positive changes. For mathematics, again, you're seeing, this is district-wide now, so this is grades three through eight, you see a meeting expectations improving as well by three points. You see exceeding remaining the same and the not meeting also remaining the same, no change in the percentage of students not meeting expectations. I'll get to science when I get a little more detailed with Ford, I believe. So when we take that breakdown, that same breakdown, and we look at each school, we look at the elementary school and the middle school, this next slide, where it says school level ELA, this is what we're looking at. Anything in green is obviously a positive trend from 2018 to 2019. And you see a slight decline for Ford Middle in exceeding expectations from four percent to three percent. But you do see an uptick in the meeting expectations piece, as well as a decline in the not meeting expectations. Math, school level. There's no change for both schools in the percentage of students scoring at the exceeding level, a slight uptick for the meeting and a positive movement in the decline of, for not meeting expectations. Science. Science, it's tricky, it's tricky to compare 2018 to 2019, because it's a new test. It's now the next generation MCAS science test or something like that. The state tried to do something where they could compare, so this is the best information we can give you and I think Paula, this is the folder PowerPoint, because I'm seeing a couple of.
Is it?
Yeah, that's all right. Yeah, there's just one or two tweaks that we'll get to you, there are thirteen minus five is, yeah, well, yeah, I'll just double-check that, we're going to check those numbers, but, so you see the slight decline in exceeding, you see the movement though in a not meeting expectation, but what I want to point to you in this one, because I couldn't really compare 2018 to 2019, I threw in a state column for you. So that's what you're seeing, right? So if you look at the state column, if you look for exceeding, Akushnet had six percent exceeding and the state had eight, so I put that in red for you, that's what we're looking at. Because I can't compare 2018, nineteen, so I can't compare it against ourselves. And then from the warning and the not meeting in 2019, we were at five and the state was at twelve, which is positive. You have less kids not meeting expectations in science than the state does, but the state has slightly more, slightly more kids exceeding expectations than you guys do. Okay. All right, so any questions up to that point? Because that led me to another line of inquiry, right? So when I looked at that data and when we were noticing the no change in the exceeding, but a good change, a really positive change in the percentage of students not meeting, I just wanted to explore a little bit more from the state perspective, how Akushnet was doing, just to give everybody some perspective. So in general, when you look at the state, this is Akushnet's demographics, I pulled this from DESI's website. You have fourteen point two percent students with disabilities, the state's reporting eighteen percent, your high needs is thirty-four point eight, the state is forty-seven point six, economically disadvantaged at twenty-four point nine, the state's thirty-one point two. And obviously, you know, a bigger difference is your, the English language learner's only about point eight percent and the state's at about ten point five. So what I did is, I wanted to take a look at those bookends, the exceeding and the not meeting compared to the state. So how's Akushnet doing? Because we saw a lot of nice change with that not meeting group and exceeding is kind of a little bit stuck, I would say. So if you look on this next one with these line plots that you see here, this is across grade levels. So Akushnet is in blue, that first graph on the left is ELA, the percent not meeting expectations. You want that to be below the orange, the orange is state, that's a good thing. If the blue is below the orange, that's positive. And so you see three, four, five, pretty steady, there's a little blip in grade six for whatever reason, and then again, you see that positive trend in seven and eight. Now, you look at exceeding, right? Because we want, in this case, we want the blue to be higher than the orange. You want the percentage of students exceeding expectations to be higher than the state. So that's happening in three and four and then we kind of lose it, right? Then it's, then there's this decline for some reason, the state, the percentage of kids in the state scoring at the exceeding level is bigger than that, what you're seeing here at Akushnet. Math, you kind of see a similar trend, right? So for math, we definitely, Akushnet definitely has less percentage of students not meeting expectations than the state does. And then there's some inconsistency when you look at the percentage of kids exceeding expectations at the state level, only grade four is above the state. And then science, again, we see really almost like a similar trend in the science. Okay. So are there any questions on that? Because what I tried to do for you is to give you a summary, obviously, but also to say, you know, what's interesting about the data? What is the data telling us? The data really should help inform school improvement work. I always use the data to help me, kind of guide, what do we need to work on, what's going well and what do we need to work on? So I do have certainly a summary slide that I can sort of read through, but I think you've got the gist of what's there. I think the real question is, what do you, as a committee, need to consider? What is the data telling us that we should consider? It's really not up to me to say, I can certainly give you, you know, as I do this work in many schools and I've done a lot of turnaround work, you know, one of the things you may want to consider, that really interesting thing, is why, if you're doing so much better with that lowest performing group, what happened to the exceeding? Why are we bumping up one more level and seeing, especially given your population, which, you know, you're not in Bedford, you're not in Fall River, right? Why can't we get that a little higher? That was just my inquiry, that's what I'm wondering. The way I usually approach that work, the first thing I look at is the assessment system. I would check to see if the assessment, the internal benchmark assessments that you're using all the time are aligned to the rigor of MCAS. MCAS is very rigorous. MCAS and math is all problem-solving, it's all critical thinking, there's a lot of author's craft in ELA, right? This is not just a bunch of rote skills. So you want to make sure that your assessment system is aligned to the rigor of MCAS, not just the standards, but the rigor of MCAS. Does that make sense? If that is, then the other thing, you want to make sure that your curriculum is aligned to those benchmark assessments. Will your curriculum, the kind of tasks you're posing to kids that's being guided by your curriculum, is that helping your kids, all your kids, reach even those upper levels? Are all kids able to move up that ladder based on your curriculum? So that's kind of where I usually begin. If that's okay, then I tend to now, well, let's take a look at how teachers are planning in terms of the deep, what the commissioner is now calling deep learning, but it's really the big ideas in the domain. Like I said, MCAS is not about rote skills, it's about big, complex ideas and are the teachers seeing that in their planning and are they able to bring that out? Does the curriculum, it's all attached, right? Does the curriculum guide them in that direction so that they can pull out those big ideas and so that kids can understand that complexity and then apply it in their assessment system and be ready for MCAS? So that's kind of usually how I do this work, when I look at people's data. And then obviously, the last thing is some work around attendance, right? I think nationally, there's things called attendance matters now, because you're not, you know, only school to see a decline in attendance. And, you know, what kind of strategic work do you need to do around that? And that's always involves parents and the community in that type of work. So.
Do you have any questions to Dr. Roy?
No.
They were great suggestions and now, you know, as a parent myself, I understand the things that we have to focus on more in our district and the things that we can let up a little bit on to move up that top rung that we have there. So thank you.
Yeah, this is very interesting.
I think it's great that we were able to identify those, you know, twenty-five percent of students and it seemed like we really must have focused on them and we came up with some great ideas, because it seems like they did very well. But, you know, when I do read, it's great, I like the pluses, like we're plus four, plus five, but we're still at forty-six percent of students meeting expectations, for example, or sixty-two percent, and that's great and I love the fact that they're pluses, but I would love to see a hundred percent meeting expectations. So I think we just, there's room for growth, but this was very clear, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I believe that Akushnet students can do this work, our teachers definitely are up for it. I believe our students can do it, but we can't continue to do the same, because if we continue to do the same, we get the same results, which as you see with the three-year trend. Because if we continue to do the same, we get the same results, which as you see with the three-year trend, very similar. So we are looking at curriculum. We know there's a lot of work that needs to be done district-wide. But I do believe Acushnet kids can do this work. There's no doubt.
Does anyone else?
No.
No.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Business Managers Report, Mrs. Flynn.
Okay, thank you. In your packet, you have various documents. I'll start with the first one. It's a draft of the Capital Improvement and Maintenance Plan. And we've been working, last year, we had a Capital Improvement Committee where we discussed some ideas of what we need to improve our facilities and maintain in the coming years. The town has asked us, and we also need to provide to the MSBA, in addition to the town's capital plan, some, some plan of what we will need to replace in the coming, you know, one to five years. So I, myself, Mr. Corrigan, Mr. Oliver, and Mr. Roy worked on this to come up with some of the big, we asked, the, the point was to look at some of the big-ticket items that we could see needing to replace or repair in the coming years. So you'll see it broken out by year one, which is this year, year, and year two, three, four, and five, which is FY twenty-four. So you see some items on here that we've talked about, that we're currently doing projects with. I'm going to talk about some of those projects later in my presentation, but you'll see that we have upgrade the burglar alarm. So that's happening this year. Upgrade the fire alarm system. In my report, I'll let you know that we have to postpone that until later this year or next year. Ongoing roadway repairs. We have, I'm thinking that, you know, based on what the town is able to give us, we can do about twenty thousand dollars worth of work a year. Unfortunately, while that may sound like a lot of money, unfortunately, in repairing the roadways, it doesn't get us too far. So that's why we're doing it incrementally. We have some central air installing for our server room at the elementary school. We're hoping to get that done this year. That's what you see, the eight thousand dollar one for, to protect and maintain our, all of our computer equipment. Roof condensers at the elementary school, that's for the cafeteria equipment. We, we completed that project and it actually came in under what the amount that we requested from the town was, so that is good. Again, ongoing preventative maintenance for the roof. We anticipate with our older roofs that we'll need to do repairs throughout the year. So we have put that in there. And what is not on here, but what is, is, what is a project that we will be doing in coordination with the Mass School Building Authority and the town is replacing a section of the elementary school roof. So that's also something that's kind of in the background as well. And some of this money that we need to, for the roof preventative maintenance, will have to go to studies for the roof replacement project, for design and project management studies. You see the replace and expand the rooftop tower. This is something that while we are doing the roof at the elementary school, we're going to try to work with other town departments to bring the towers up so that we can have better communication throughout the town. For example, with the police department and the fire department to get higher than the tree line to be able to have better reception. So that's something we're going to try to partner with the other town departments with to do. Upgrade our HVAC server. Right now, the software on the HVAC server that runs all the controls for, across the district, it's supported through 2020. So what that means is we have to do something. The town gave us money to upgrade that and we have signed a purchase order to get that done. So that work will be done probably anytime this year. At AES, we started to replace some floor tiles in, in some of the classrooms. This year, we replaced, I believe, two classrooms and a workroom. And there's more classrooms that need to be done, so we put that across all five years. FMS, replace the gymnasium wall between the cafeteria and the gym. This is something we were hoping to get approval for from the town to do this year, but that is not something that we were able to do. So that'll be probably one of our bigger requests for next year because it's something that really needs to be taken care of. Continuing on our little toy playground replacement, we started it, but we need to finish it and put the structures up. So we have that in for next year. Roof condensers at the middle school, again, the, for the refrigerator, for the refrigeration, the HVAC, the air conditioning, we need to replace those. All of this equipment, for the most part, is, is from when the buildings were renovated and that's seventeen years ago. So although sometimes we think we have a newer school building, things are starting to show their age and we need to keep, maintain and repair them. So we have that. We may be able to use some of the money left over from the AES roof condenser project and carry it forward to FMS. I just have to get some advice from the town on that, how the article was written. So we have an ongoing technology upgrade. We have twenty-five thousand in the next couple of years to, to replace and repair any technology. At FMS, univent repair, so those are in some of the classrooms and offices, the vents for the heat. A lot of times, especially the past few winters, the, we've had to replace motors, actuators, valves. So we're going to look to, we know that now every year we have more and more that we need to replace and we can't just, you know, survive with putting it out of the operating budget as we have more and as this equipment gets older. So we have that budgeted in there. The boilers, they're old, but we've been advised from the, the company that helps us with our boilers that we really, it wouldn't be prudent to replace them now when we should probably wait until we can replace them with gas boilers. So we're hoping that at some point, I know there was some talk a few years ago of N-Star, EverSource running gas out to the school here. That hasn't happened yet. So we're just right now putting in some money for any repair work that needs to be done with the hope that at some point in the future, we'll be able to replace them. We also have the big toy playground replacement. Once we finish the little toy, we'll move on to the big toy. We also have the next two things are some snow removal equipment to be, to best, to better be able to, to be more self-sufficient. We're very happy that the town helps us out in the DPW, but with the proper equipment, we could get the, the lots cleared on our own much faster. So those are the next two things. And out, you see, out for year five is to replace the, the commercial lawnmower. And then again, in year five, some underground oil tank repairs. So that's what we have for the draft. I just wanted to review it with the school committee because that is something that is required for our MSBA application. And I'll have more discussion on that once I have the facilities update. So does anyone have any questions on, on any of those projects? And we will be meeting throughout the year. And once we get to budget season, we will be reviewing some of these for articles with the Budget Subcommittee at that time.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you. Very thanks. Thank you.
Okay. The next item that you have is the budget update for fiscal twenty. We're approximately three months into the fiscal year, but really, most of our operations started happening just this month in September. So as you know, throughout the year, when I update the budget at each school committee meeting, I like to tell you how we're doing with our major accounts, with our salaries, with our tuitions, with our utilities. So right now, it's really too soon to tell any of those. We haven't received other than our summer tuition bills and our summer transportation bills. So I think once we get through September and we can see what the year looks like, I can compare that to what we budgeted in actual budget. So you'll see more of that specifics in the coming, in the coming months. Likewise, with salaries, you know, right now, with an, with unsettled contracts, it's really hard to see how we're doing against the budget. But once, you know, we're hopeful that once that gets done, we'll be able to see how we're doing against the budget on that and other line items. Right now, I don't have any particular line items that I'm concerned with to, to bring to your attention, but I'm sure as the year progresses, we will, we will have some discussion on that. And like I said, you know, once I get the tuition bills for our out-of-district placements and for our high schools, then I can better, or at least our enrollments at the high schools as of October one, I can better take a look and see how we're doing in that regard. The next item that I have for you is the facilities update. So what I've done is I've just done a summary of the projects that we worked on in the summer and some of the issues that we experienced. You know, so we've had a couple of, of unexpected things happen, but we've, we've dealt with them and overcome it. So first thing for the pump station, while we were digging for the sprinkler system to install for the soccer fields, the electric line to the pump station was hit this summer and it was offline for some time. We had to have another company in and pump, pump us out and then repair the electric line. So that's back online. It happened during the summer, not while school was in session. So that, if it had to happen, that was a good time for it to happen. Again, our oil pump here at Ford Middle School, while the company was digging for the electric car charging station, the line from the Ford Middle School oil tank was hit. They didn't tell us that. They attempted to repair it. We didn't realize that. No one told us. It wasn't, it wasn't any of town departments, it was an outsourced company. So when we came back to school, we found that we had no hot water. In the summertime, we're just washing our hands for a brief time. So, you know, it's not unusual not to have hot water, you know, for that brief time. But when the kitchen came and demanded the hot water, when we had done, we had to do a lot of troubleshooting and that's what was found. So what was happening is the oil wasn't getting to, through to the building. So we brought in a temporary tank. This was about a couple of days of troubleshooting. Temporary tank was brought in. You'll see on the backside of the business office. And right now, the DPW is digging up the central office parking area this week so that Lemieux can come in and replace the line. So we should have, and we've received assurance from the contractor used by EverSource that they will pay for all damage and repairs. So again, you know, we're lucky that didn't happen. We found out about it before heating season. It didn't happen and, and knock the heat out. So we've got it fixed, but it was just, you know, a little unexpected nuisance that we had.
Excuse me, Kristen?
Mm-hmm.
Back to the water line with the sprinklers, that's not out of the school budget, right? We'll be going back for.
The, oh yes, so the excessive water consumption at Ford.
That's going to be straightened out.
Yep, yep, that's the next one I'm going on to, yeah.
And just a question about the electric car station. That was not something that the school district had requested, correct?
No, no, that was something I, you know, I don't know the full details, but I believe it was part of a grant perhaps that the town received as part of the Green Communities. And so I believe that some charging stations have to be interspersed throughout the town. And since we have a large town property, the, the school sites were chosen. So there's, there's two, one at the Ford Middle School and one at the elementary school. And those actually are not completed. They're not hooked up yet because there was apparently a miscommunication between, between the parties that were doing this. And now that, from what I understand, the town is now responsible for some cost associated to, to hook up the electric car charging station. So if anybody's wondering why they can't plug in their car just yet, we are waiting for some guidance, you know, from, from, from the town on that. So, so we're, we're hosting these spaces. You know, hopefully, they will be useful to, to some employees or to the general public as they drive by. But right now, it's, it's caused us some, some difficulty. So another problem that we had this summer is we all of a sudden got alerted from the DPW about a couple of weeks ago that we were, had a critical consumption at Ford Middle School for water. They monitor this, which is great because then sometimes that alert says that maybe there's, you know, something running somewhere. And, you know, after, you know, the custodians looked, Andrew looked, you know, DPW came in, they finally traced it back to the fact that there was something leaking between our building and the meter that was installed to run the sprinkler system for the soccer fields. So luckily, they determined that we were not going to be charged for the water that was the excess water. So we won't see a big uptick in our bill and it's going to be fixed. So that was part of the, you know, the sprinkler system project.
So just to clarify, Kristen, that this, the water that's used on the soccer fields is not part of the school budget?
It's not. There's a separate meter.
AYSA pays for that.
A separate meter has been installed. And I believe the water that was going out to that meter, the leak was somewhere in there. So any water that's used to run the sprinkler system is not a meter that is charged to the school department, okay? So that's important. So the next thing that we have is the elementary school roof. The prerequisite documents have been sent to the MSBA in advance of the deadline, which is Thursday. Today, I submitted the online current routine and maintenance capital plan. That was received. So we have completed our, what we're required to do. The next step is now the MSBA, Mass School Building Authority, will assign an owner's project manager and a designer. So now the feasibility study and all the architecture work will start to take place. They do say that, you know, at each step, right now, we're invited into the program. We haven't been guaranteed, but, you know, we've, we're, we're on pace and we've, we've required with, you know, adhered to all of their requirements. So, you know, stay tuned for that one. Grounds, we had our, our summer workers this summer. We had, we were lucky to have some hard-working college students. We had the sheriff's office and we also had a local Acushnet landscaping company, Lawn and Order, helping us get the grounds looking nice and neat and ready for school opening. As I mentioned, in the capital plan, we replaced the AES condensers. We also replaced an outside exit door at Ford here in the gymnasium. We had to replace it for code compliance, so we needed it to open out with panic bars. So that was a job that we worked on this summer. Again, we replaced some floor tiles in the elementary school and will continue to do that. Plumbing repairs, we're having a lot of leaking sinks and toilets, especially at the elementary school. So several weeks were spent on those issues this summer. And we also had a, a clogged main line at the elementary school main office. Unfortunately, occurred the Friday before school started and the floors had to be re-stripped in wax. So that kind of set us back as well. And we did some lighting replacement. We replaced lights and ballasts in both schools. We do have a lighting upgrade project coming. The town again has received a grant and they will be replacing all of the lights at the Acushnet Elementary School and the common lighting areas at Ford Middle School. This is planned to take place over the next few months. I'll be meeting with the town department, hopefully, either the end of this week or early next week. But the latest that we have heard is that the work has to be done and completed and signed off on in the next few months. So unfortunately, they were not able to schedule it over the summer, which would have been opportune for us with school not being in session. So we're going to have to work around the school schedule. And again, this is a, a project that comes to us from a town grant. Burglar alarm upgrade with the contract was awarded. Work is going to start shortly. There's been some backordering on the parts. So the latest that we've heard is that they'll be starting, I believe, next week. The fire alarm upgrade. Now, I want to preface this by saying the fire alarm system is working. So I don't want anybody to be concerned that it's not working. We just want to upgrade it. We had hoped to upgrade the devices, only the smoke detectors. But like some of our projects have gone here, due to lack of available plans from the building construction, we weren't able to develop the proper specifications to quote out or bid out this job. You need to have specific requirements so that anybody looking at it can bid or quote on the same thing. And the existing system is proprietary, meaning it's one vendor that has, has the, the parts and the, the controls of it. So we need to now revise the plan to upgrade the entire system. So the electronics of the system, the control boards, in addition to the devices. We had hoped to just upgrade the devices first and then move on to upgrading the control system. But unfortunately, that is not going to, that plan has to change. So we're currently having the plans designed. We can carry forward unused funds from this year. And the good news is, is that the burglar and fire alarms, I believe, were written as one article and we're going to come in. It seems a lot lower on the, on the burglar side, so we can carry forward those funds. So we will have to ask for more funds for the fire alarm system upgrade for next year, but not as much because we'll be using some of the burglar alarm funds, so that's good. Parking lot maintenance, I talked about that. The DPW will be repairing the roadway along the back of Ford Middle School. So if you come down from Middle Road and you see the bus lot, that area is fine. That's recently been repaired. But once you make that left turn so that you're parallel to the school behind the business office, that part of the roadway up to the pump station is scheduled to be replaced, repaired next. And also, the little drive that, that cuts in, directly in front of the superintendent's and business office. And then we should have some funds left over to repair any potholes that may come up or any manholes that are starting to sink. So that is.
Question about that. Would that be done during school hours or will that be done after?
We, it's contingent upon what the DPW is going to do the work. So, you know, what we will try to do is minimize any disruption because we realize that that back area is a main travel for the school buses, for the pickup and drop-off. So, you know, that we will definitely have to take into consideration when that can be done. Unfortunately, you know, we have to work not at, somewhat not at our own schedule, so. But we will definitely take that into consideration and communicate anything, you know, any changes out that will have to take place. So we'll stay tuned for that. Yep. Last couple of things, the server room AC. Like I said, the town's building and maintenance department will be assisting us with some installation. This one is at the Acushnet Elementary School and it's going to provide air conditioning to the server room. We have a lot of equipment in there that we need to keep cool. And right now, we're just awaiting their availability. So we have a lot of projects that are going on with the cooperation of town departments, which is excellent. And we're really thankful to have their, to have their assistance and to have their support. But sometimes what that means is because they're working for the entire town, we have to, you know, we have to be patient and wait for, you know, for our turn. we have to, you know, we have to be patient and wait for, you know, for our turn, basically. So, you know, I'll continue to keep you all updated. One last thing is the soccer fields, soccer fields update. The fence was to be installed last weekend, and this weekend. I saw the posts come up. So that's moving around that, that section. And we have solicited quotes for field maintenance, as we discussed at the school committee workshop last week. And we, I reached out to five local landscaping companies. To my knowledge, two have come to look at it so far, and we're just awaiting quotes from them to, to see about. Because now that we have a nice fields and nice irrigation, we're going to have to cut the grass more, so... So that's, the good news is, it's going to look beautiful. The bad news is, it's going to require more, more maintenance than, than the weeds. So that's all I have for the, for my report. I don't know if anyone has any questions, but I can certainly take them.
Just for the grass part of it, though, you know, we are negotiating that with AYSA, so that's not going to be just on us.
No, no.
Make that...
Excellent, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. School committee member reports. Does anyone have anything?
No.
I'm just going to update on Little Toy.
Okay, sure.
So I will be meeting with the town to learn how to write that article for the Little Toy. Brian Noble, our former administrator, town administrator, suggested that all of that begin end of October. So if you haven't heard anything from me or at the PTO, it's because nothing can be done right now.